I.
So I went to that waste hole over here and um the people are, the people I was sitting at are from down by Lake City. Near township. They made a comment about um they've got uh you you see the portable uh ten, ten, ten by twenty carports. You see, I I up when I brought up and then next door, three of them. And she said that they're down there, they're having a problem with people putting up several. So it started, you know, now you're starting to just have a certain look to 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 property if you got all this thing. But they're gonna do something about it. She didn't say what they're gonna do, but they're gonna address it. She wondered if you had that problem. I said, well, no, we got, we have had that problem. And I'm not, and I'm not about people looking for a problem. There is a problem. We've been on that one, right? But something that maybe just as a planning commission, you guys want to put in the back of your head, um coupled up with this, this multiple small shed thing. I told, I told the person, I said, looking down the road on this, that um what you'd hate to see, what your neighbors would hate to see would be multiple portable sheds down going in. Yes, it's your property.
Right.
And you want, how you can use it, all that. And if it's within the ordinance, so you can't, um as long as it's a permitted use, um. Just, I don't know what I'm saying, telling you to do, but keep it in the back of your head. Is that something that you wanna be on the lookout for?
Um if it, if it does show up, is that something that you want or you don't care? Um. Just, just trying to look at the storm clouds and make sure, hopefully not storm clouds, because especially get down on a lake like that. We're not talking to somebody that's got thirty acres on on ag somewhere and they're, you know, not bothering anybody. Um and this person had said that the uh the the neighbor had no issue with them or them doing what they were doing last time, the first shed they put in. So anyway, that's, that's where I left it. Yeah, go, go ahead and get your shed. Do, do your thing. I can't tell you not to as long as you're abiding by setbacks. Because there's nothing in our zoning that says limit three. And I don't know if they wanna go there, because I don't think most people are gonna do that, right? Um there's that and um. I guess one of the things I was gonna maybe mention, but I can't think of what it is now, so.
Do, is there a clear line of the difference between a shed and a habitable space?
I said, is it on the foundation? She said, no. So it's like the portable.
And square footage.
Square foot, yeah.
Oh, the second you bring in water and septic into a shed, that can now be considered habitable space.
Well, Ken, I said, you're, where you're gonna run into problems now is with the building department, because they have specs. They have specifications on what, I said, if you put in facilities in there, then the building department's gonna have a input on that to say, well, they're gonna have to be the ones to decide whether you're abiding by the building code, um rules. If it was a residence, as you know, you gotta have a certain number of square feet for a, for a restroom. You gotta have clear space, right? You gotta have all these things. And a, and a residence has to have sleeping area and, and cooking and, and restroom. It's gotta have things. I've talked to Frank about that before, when we've talked about, is there, do we have a minimum size? And, you know, he says, no, the county doesn't have a minimum size, but they have, they have minimum spec specifications on what you gotta have, which in the end results in, you know, you'd be lucky to get past, I don't know what your number is, maybe four hundred and fifty square feet or something to, to make it habitable.
Yep.
You, you, you were on the right, so we're on the same page.
Yep.
Um so again, I think, I think the issue at that point is, it's a county issue more than.
Understood, sorry.
No, I, I appreciate that. This is only a chance we get to talk.
Yeah.
Really, um so um.
I just would hate to find a loophole in that, because there are some loopholes within, and Frank knows this better than I, but there are some loopholes within that code where kind of like a, a commission here in a township where you're reactionary to it, because they're not looking for that specifically.
Right.
And I just would hate for to find a loophole and then you, you know, if we, someone doesn't act quick enough, you do have a scenario kind of like down by Lake City where.
Right.
You have shed after shed after shed, and now how do you, you know, how do you stop it?
How do you back up from that?
Yeah, so.
I would say they can't get around it by joining them together, because if you could.
Yeah, that.
Put one in that's two hundred square feet, then you put another one next to it that's two hundred square feet, now you take the walls out, but.
I, I told her, I said, that, that becomes an issue for me if you start talking about joining together. She said, no, that, that wasn't, that wasn't gonna happen.
Okay.
Um. I have something else that just slipped my mind as I was asking, but if it's all right, thank your permission, I'll bring that back up when my, when my mind clears. So that, that's where it's at, that's what's going on.
All right.
I, I could just speak to the canopies, like the, we use the carport things, because I do mostly ordinance and gale or enforcement. Um we do allow that, the city does, um because you can't have junk vehicles, your vehicles have to be licensed, insured, and drivable. But if you have an old truck that you wanted with dads, you wanna keep, if you have one of these carports, you know, just a two hundred dollar carport from a farming home, as long as it's covered and you can't see it.
Right.
Now you can't, you have to up, maintain that canopy, where it can't be all ripped and torn down. I'm, I'm dealing with one right now, and he's gonna buy a new cover for it. Um so as long as it looks neat and, you know, and, and we have some people that put those, and we're dealing with smaller lots in the city, obviously, than we are in the, in the county. And that is one way of these, these houses that are smaller houses, don't have garages, they will put those in and, and keep all their junk, for lack of a better word, in there, where it's out of, out of eyesight, and as long as they maintain that.
Well, and I think it's a good thing, I, I, I have, obviously I have no, nothing against them. Um I was gonna swing back to what I did remember. Um when you talk about the small places and all these, there is something in our ordinance, Ken, uh correct me if I'm wrong, about the, kind of the tiny house thing. Um I think that's addressed in our, in our ordinance.
It is, yeah.
So um there is that provision there for someone that, that they wanna, is it's called the economy units, is that what we call them?
Yeah, or guest, um, yeah.
Something, yeah, yeah.
We have accessory dwelling units too.
Accessory.
Well, we have accessory dwelling units, but then there's also that.
Yeah, it's like a guest cottage type of thing.
Economy efficiency or something like that, I think it's, yeah, whatever.
Yeah.
But there is a, there's provision for something like that. The other thing I did, did have, and I gotta check into this tomorrow, um the mother moss suite, right, in a home. I think those were going in before, or one of the, I, I don't know, because I wasn't on this, but then, but I suspect, one of the driving um forces for, for the additional dwelling unit was to address that.
Yeah.
Right? So I had to call, well, I have to call someone tomorrow, it's a realtor, they're selling a house, and the home has, has this in it. And they wanna know if, if, if they can continue with that, um and, you know, make it a long-term rental. And so, well, it's gonna have to, we have to, you know, abide by the rules of, of an E D U, but if it's already in and already been approved, I said, I don't see how that can be, because we've talked about that before.
Yeah.
Once you do that, and the person that you, you did it for passes away, well, you can't stop them from renting. It just can't be a short-term thing. It's gotta be a, a long-term, uh rental situation. So I think, I don't, I don't see any problems coming up with that. But when those things pop up, it makes you, it just kinda puts you on alert a little bit, because, yeah, is this something we tried to avoid before? And is that why we did something else? And, you know, so. And I, I had one other thing. Oh, I got a situation that um is, is, I, I, I'll say it to the planning commission, because you guys are in, involved with, with this. We've got another non-conforming situation that's come up. Um I talked to Frank about it before he left. He was gonna check on it from the county side. He didn't have a chance to, so when he gets back, so um next month, I wouldn't be surprised if I, you know, come to you guys with, with a potential on a, a non-conforming deal that may have to, action may have to be taken on it by, by me, because I decided to enforce them, so. Um but I think it's important that the planning commission be aware of those things when they, when they pop up, so. All right, that's it. I'll end on it.
All right, thank you. All right, Richard, for the, for us from the township.
So we spent, uh, the last month's meeting, a lot of time with public comment, very vigorous comment and discussion about the old railroad grade, the trail. And just the bottom line is, we're pursuing that cautiously, looking at legal aspects and so forth. There's a lot of opposition to it, there's a lot of support for it. And so we're gonna see, if, if we can find a path forward that makes sense for the township financially and legally, then I think we're gonna pursue it. So various things are being worked on, and we'll probably, we'll be discussing that again next Monday. Road improvements continue to be a big thing. We approved doing the kind of minimalistic approach to Toad Lake Road, redoing the gravel on it. But even the minimalistic thing on that little short piece is twenty-six thousand dollars or something. Um we had more discussion about the soil extraction ordinance, and that's ongoing discussion, and it's on our agenda here again tonight. So, and then, of course, as you all see, Travis was elect, was appointed to this board, and we're pleased to have him. I think those are all the things that are really relevant to this point.
That was a long meeting, what time did you say?
Five-hour meeting.
A month and PM almost.
Five hours, crazy. Well, it was the, uh, we should have had a public hearing for that trail thing, because that took hours. And then we still had to get our full agenda done.
Great. Ken, what do you have for us?
Well, there was a planning report in the packet, but just to comment on, on the items that Curtis brought up as well. I am seeing more and more frequently in zoning ordinances, uh specific restrictions on accessory buildings. You know, depending on how many acres you have, it dictates how many you can have, and, and they often differentiate with minor ones, two hundred square feet or less. Anything more than two hundred square feet would be a major. So if you have an acre property, you know, I'm just going to top it, and you can have two minors and one major. The uh square footage of the major is laid out, and then it, you know, kinda indicates um what the setbacks are for those two. So I am seeing that more and more frequently, um becoming the common thing to include in zoning ordinances. Not suggesting that's something we need to do in Bangstownship, um but other communities do regulate that. And the other thing, and I'm sure Curtis thought of this, and I'm sure you all thought of this, but I see this a lot. Someone says, I'm just gonna put in a sink to wash my yard supplies, and then the next thing you know, they've got sleeping quarters and a, a full-blown living space in that accessory unit. So that usually comes out through the building department. You know, in my experience, they'll be out there, they'll call me and say, you know, we looked at your zoning permit, or you didn't issue a zoning permit, did you know they're putting living space in that structure? And then you have an enforcement issue, and usually it's in conjunction with the building department, so. You know, that's, I mean, but there are some people, maybe she is legit, just wants to do her, her yard supplies, and that would be fine. And I agree with Curtis, that would be a building department thing, but there's always those people that are looking to kinda skirt the rules that way too, so. But if, if the planning commission's interested in seeing samples of, you know, limitations on accessory buildings, we can certainly provide that at a future meeting. Another thing is shipping containers is becoming a popular uh item to include in zoning ordinances in other communities.
We do have that.
Yes, we do. My neighbor has a shipping container.
So just let me know.
Okay.
Just for storage or for living?
I don't know.
People are doing cool things with them, like turning them into houses and shit.
Yeah, I've seen that, and we use them for, not to get set, but for storage for homeowners and whatnot. So I just was interested to see if we're, you know, tiptoeing the boundary of, you know, go, what we shouldn't be doing, you know.
Right.
But I'll have to look at that.
I would piggyback what he thought, I think, um that non-conforming situation that I mentioned might be coming up. There was no, no zoning permit drawn, uh or I would have seen this before it started. And that's why I'm pretty sure there's no, building department did not issue a permit either, and I think that's what Frank will find out. But I'm gonna have, I'm gonna let Frank approach it from the county side first to say, hey, you can pull the permit for, to build this structure, um and I'll go work backwards from there. So it's frustrating.
All right, so unfinished business. We are still working with the master plan revision, um so can I just?
I'm gonna have my colleague, Ruben, from Beckett later, who's looking to listen.
Yep, I can introduce this, do, introduce this segment real quick. So in the packet this month, we included um the results from the community survey that was open back between June and August of twenty twenty-four, right as you all connected, started this process of looking at the master plan again. And as well, the survey results from five years ago, when the township did its last master plan update survey. So um those are, again, just a series of kind of multiple choice questions, gauging people's opinions on different land use and development matters in the township. So I think the summary, and this, this starts on um page um ten of the, the packet overall. Uh some of this should look pretty familiar. Um so we brought this to you all tonight just to consider how folks' preferences have changed over time and how you might consider those, um and consider those as you look at the goals and objectives of the master plan. And we have that later on in the agenda for this evening. So this is really kind of a good guidepost for formulating all the goals and objectives and sort of direction of the master plan later on. So um I just wanted to revisit this overall. I think um really one of the main findings is that um a lot of the preferences are really the same as they were five years ago. Because um folks think that preserving agricultural land in the townships sort of um scenic character are really key priorities. Taking measures to preserve water quality and the shoreline quality are really important. Access to trails and recreation are very important. Land for conservation and recreation, um those are key assets that the township has that folks wanna see preserved. So those were similar when we did the survey back last year, and it was similar when we, um, when the township did the survey back in twenty eighteen. Really, one of the major kind of shifts that I think um we might see there is that there's a little more appetite for housing than there was maybe in twenty eighteen. Um some folks said that uh they'd like to see uh more, have larger lots, single-family residential homes and um um smaller-sized homes, um smaller lots, uh that kind of thing. That's really one of the major kind of shifts to me in, in looking at this high level. So um yeah, I'm glad to go into any of the survey uh results from last year that we're using and looking at this time around to um update the goals and objectives. Uh we can take a look at any of these in more detail that you'd like to. But um yeah, just wanted to bring this all to you this evening and have you think about it a little more as we get into the goals and objectives and future land use that we'll cover a little later in the agenda.
Chart two that has the goals and objectives. I need, I think you put this together some time ago. So you, I thought it was a good format to go through them and, you know, when I sent it, it came like this, but if you print it out a copy, you can flip it and look at it like this. You can lay them off pretty good, um, you know, in terms of being able to review them. And as Ruben said, the results between the twenty eighteen survey and the twenty fourteen, pretty similar. You know, not a lot of dramatic changes. There, you know, was an appetite for maybe more housing options, um but other than that, it was pretty consistent.
Now, that's been an issue with, coming from the school board's side of it, we've got a couple of teachers that live up in the area, can't find housing. Uh families that may have come to the area, put the kids in the school, but college wasn't coming.
So there might be one change to our goals and objectives that we might wanna add in there.
Yeah.
You know, encouraging families that want some sort.
How do you do that?
I don't know. Right, great question. But, you know, it's, I think it gets a little, it's a circle, right? Though we wanna preserve the farmland, and we don't wanna split things up.
Hold this space.
But yet, at the same time, we wanna have family have affordable housing. They can't afford a twenty, forty-acre piece of property, they need to five. I know, so you, you have this push-pull, right? So we could ask the, we could ask more questions, we could do more surveys to see really what people, you know, if you, if you, what's your priority? To maintain large parcels or truly to create some housing or in certain areas, or, you know, where do we wanna, right? I mean, that's, I think that's all we can do.
And yet, all that has to be done through the private, through private parties, right? I mean, it's, it happens.
But we can look at it.
I think Marv said something about that, that the, we talked about the smaller pieces. Um remember how we dividing the, the uh acreage? I don't remember exactly what it's kind of, but it was, it has something to do with, you know, do you want, you wanna have an area maybe where you can have some, some smaller pieces while still preserving the, the, I don't know, the back acreage. I don't, I don't know, I don't know how you do it.
Right.
You still gotta get somebody, you have to make, you have to make it okay by ordinance, and then there's gotta be somebody that wants to sell, and.
But I think looking at the ordinance, I'm saying, you know, truly, is it too restrictive? Are we not allowing some areas to, to create parcels that somebody could purchase and could sell them? We're not even looking, because we, our ordinance is too restrictive. That's what we can do. We can't encourage them to buy something.
And, you know, and that's really the purpose of the master plan, is you're looking ten, twenty years out. And the, the items that you put in here, you know, particularly in the goals and maybe in the future land use map, you might designate a goal or designate areas for maybe higher-density residential. Doesn't mean it's ever gonna come to pass, doesn't mean the zoning ordinance is ever gonna be amended to capture that. But it's just addressing that need for, you know, more affordable housing options. You know, the place to sort of start the process to see if it even comes to fruition would be the master plan, you know.
Does our zoning ordinance allow a P U D in an ag? I think so.
I think so too. Yeah, I think it's, that's a permitted use.
Well, that would be one way to do it.
Yeah, that's true. That's true.
Mechanism is kind of right there.
We put that ten-lot little subdivision up there on the hill behind our market twenty years ago. And there's about ten acres there, and we get ten lots, so it's a way to do it.
Yeah, so the mechanism is, at least to some extent, is, is already there. It's just a lot, those, those hoops to jump through.
Yeah. I, I guess my question here, Tom, is why would you put something in the master plan but not implement it as an ordinance?
Well, if you, if, you know, we recognize there's a need for maybe more affordable housing, make it a, a, an objective or a goal to maybe modify the ordinance or include places on future land use map to allow that to happen. After that happens, the planning commission could start the process to amend the ordinance, but it ultimately would be up to the township board. Or let's say there was areas designated in the future land use map for higher-density zoning. It'd be up to the property owners individually to seek a rezoning. So the property owners may decide they don't wanna do that. The board might decide, no, we're not gonna amend the ordinance to allow that. So that would be, you know, the planning commission still thinks it's a good land use idea for the master plan, but it may not actually happen. You know, but what I didn't mean to say is, you don't wanna put things in there that you know are never gonna happen, or that aren't even feasible. You know, we wanna be realistically thinking, okay, what's gonna happen ten, twenty years from now? How might this portion of the township be utilized? So thinking, trying to find areas where potentially higher density residential or different housing options might be appropriate, you know, that'd be good to include in there. And we can make some suggestions on that too.
Like, I, I agree with Ken definitely that the master plan can be a starting point to establish the direction that, that um, you know, the community wants to find ways to promote more housing, you know, the specifics are yet to come too. But um I think just something I heard earlier too is the. the PUD option can be a good way to do that. Some communities, I think, have written their planning and development in a way that allows decrease in the lot area standards in a residential district and so a little denser housing developers doing some certain benefit to the community like preserving agricultural land on a given site or some standard mature trees or something else that the community is gaining some kind of benefit from. And the developer might be able to qualify for some kind of density bonus or something that would allow a little smaller housing product or a little higher density that could in turn incentivize them to build it, so we can, we can look into that kind of thing if that's something that's of interest to.
Yeah.
And and I think, and I don't have it in front of me and I don't know off the top of my head, but I think, you know, normally with the PUD, the density is usually tied to the underlying zoning district. So if you're putting a PUD in the ag district, you might not be able to do a cluster housing development or anything without tweaking the ordinance a little bit. So those might be things we can explore too, you know, when we get to sort of finalizing the the master plan.
But now we're ready down to, what's the minimum lot size, twenty thousand square feet?
Half an acre.
Yeah, that's pretty small.
Yeah.
That's small enough.
Yeah. Unless you bump into that split foot mill.
Well, yeah, well, that's what would have to be habit.
Yeah.
And then you go out White Street here, you know, and has anything ever been built back in there almost before that's been whole?
Right, that's crazy.
I don't want to get so out of dollars a cent, so I don't know, this is a lot, no one's just building all that. But there are places that if somebody wanted to, there are spots available, you know. I don't want to do so much. The other thing about a PUD is you get, that's a, that's a public hearing situation, so, you know, you've got you've got neighbor input and all of that in in those situations too, so it's not a slam dunk. Somebody wants to do that.
Well, maybe we can add some language into the, to the goals and objectives, you know, sort of reflect what we talked about and bring it back to the planning commission for a little bit more discussion. Any other, any of the other goals? Has anyone seen anything that maybe, they looked, you know, pretty consistent with the results of the twenty twenty four survey? I did see a lot of, and I, and we did look at this a long time ago, prior to, that was the first thing we did, I think, before we even did the survey. But we have new planning commissioners and, you know, the results of the survey up and modify the goals and objectives, but I think they're pretty consistent. I don't see a lot of change. We maybe had a few things, but aside from that, I think the goals still reflect the results of the twenty twenty four survey.
We can definitely take a look if it sounds like there's some interest in just kind of light updates to the goals and objectives to facilitate the the housing need a little bit more and take a look at those.
And we can also look at the existing ordinance too and see if what is already on the books might match, you know, some of these survey results that, you know, people, I think, that the smaller homes, the smaller lots, some of those things might already be captured in the zoning ordinance.
There was somewhere in here, I'm not, I'm at a loss right now, and you didn't write it down, regarding the the corridor, the scenic corridor, was that in this part? Was that another part?
The byway?
That there, yeah, that there's a, some sort of group advocating for that and if there is, I don't know that who they are, what they're doing. Am I speaking out of turn here?
Yeah, I see on page forty of the plan, the twenty nineteen plan, there's something about the breezeway.
Yes.
The byway, the breezeway.
Yeah.
Yeah, to market the corridor.
Right, and and was there ever a group that assembled to be that kind of advocate for that? It was not in the article?
I think Tina had something to give that in trade.
Um, I know, perhaps, I know Tom Mann was a real strong proponent of it. And then after he was no longer on the board, I don't know, I I wondered if that just kind of went away. And I don't know that that's, actually, that wasn't a part of our survey in that I just might be, you know, I don't need to 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 get into this if it's not a priority for the community.
Here's one about collaborate with jurisdictions along the breezeway to market the corridor and upgrade signage.
Oh, yes, what it is, so.
So it's under the goal of improving, maintaining the township for at least to provide safe access for all users. One of the action items was to explore opportunity by adding bike lanes and bike paths in the township. That will connect with the larger non-motorized road network and then another action effect, collaborate with jurisdictions along the breezeway.
Yeah, okay.
And we're working with the village on updating their master plan as well. And there was a group, you know, they have similar obviously interests. There was a group, and I know they had APP within their name, that was formed to try to market the breezeway and do things.
Responsible part of breezeway task force.
Yeah, and I think it was disbanded.
Oh, okay.
But again, that's just based on me working with the village. They had, they recognized that group in their plan and the the planning commission of the village said, we need to take that off because that group doesn't exist anymore.
Yeah, I noticed the signs are not kept up.
Yeah, yes.
To revisit, we also did have, I mean, I think really positive response about trails and in the survey, so that kind of tied in to some extent, right? So the recreational trails, we talked about ATV trails too, I think. Just not as popular with the non-motorized, but eighty-five percent would like to support that, so.
Right, and that made me think about the last board meeting, the township board meeting, where there was biggest discussion about that, and so that's kind of interesting. So community, I mean, according to the survey, there's pretty wide support for that.
Yes, and I think that's why the board as a whole is not shut the door up.
And on the trail, I listened, at the end of the meeting, I listened to some of it on the YouTube or whatever and a couple of comments, you know, people were worried about crime and stuff. If you, you do it, it's actually just the opposite, if you were to fence that off. Before, when I was still working for Antown County, when it really wasn't used as a footpath, we were down there all the time. That was, I know, for people doing stuff they weren't doing. And now that it is used more, the people that are doing that stuff don't want to be seen. And so the more it is, an area is used, the less of that you see. And I have cattle on the other side down, my kid's a ranger from my place. They're at Dulce's to bring cattle in the water and check on them. Because I got no issue, I've never, when I, when I moved back from downstate, there was a little bit of it. As as the trail got used more and more, the less of the riff ramp you saw because it just keeps those, you know, people that want witnesses, they want to go somewhere where it's and that was my take on it when somebody asked me is if you do let it revert to the railroad and they put a fence around it, the bad guys don't care about the fence, they're going to cut a hole and then find somewhere they can come in and out. And they'll go down there, that'll be where the party staff and that'll be where stuff's going on because that's how it works.
And and it might, you know, we can tweak the language, but reestablishing, you know, or having the township be a partner in in reestablishing, you know, a breezeway action committee, you know, might be something to include as a goal or objective too. And I think the village would be supportive of teaming up on that.
Okay. Yeah. That'd be, that would go.
Yeah. We can modify this and bring it back for further discussion.
Okay.
All right, anybody else have any more comments about the survey or the goal? All right, so next is the the zoning ordinance for the transitory extraction of natural resources. Nothing much for us to do at this point, but there was a request from Ken to give us a little some background for the newer hoppers. So now might be a good time for that.
Yeah, and I included in the packet and this, I put this together before the township board adopted those ordinances. But it still sort of lays out, at least in us, in what I think is a succinct form of how the process flows between those ordinances. But late last year, the township board amended the zoning ordinance to add a new article to term twelve. And it essentially establishes a process to apply for the transitory or temporary extraction of natural resources. Along with that, the board adopted a police power or standalone soil removal ordinance that is the third step in this process of somebody applying for and receiving approval to extract natural resources. So those, that amendment to the zoning ordinance is valid, that standalone ordinance is valid. How we revisited this is the board wanted to make it clear that neither the zoning ordinance provisions or the standalone ordinance apply to small scale extraction. And we added language that says under two, two thousand yards or if you're doing a foundation or, you know, a basement pursuant to a valid building permit, you don't have to jump through all the the steps in the ordinances, you can just do that, they provide exceptions. So we sent the exceptions to the township, at the time, the township attorney, the township has new attorneys now. And the township attorney suggested some additional changes, which is more or less taking some sections out of the soil removal ordinance and adding them into the zoning ordinance. So that's kind of the amendment that's pending for the township board currently. How this all started was back in twenty twenty three, you know, we had a, an application came in for a mineral extraction operation. And at that time, the planning commission looked at the ordinance that was on the, in the zoning ordinance and it designated that use as a special use. Now, in twenty eleven, so it was Public Act one thirteen of twenty eleven, the State Zoning Enabling Act was amended. And essentially it was amended and specifically to deal with natural resource extraction uses. And just really summarizing it, it says, okay, local communities, townships, cities, villages, if you want to have ordinance provisions regulating those uses, you got to make sure that they pull out and determine whether, in the exact language, is very serious consequences will result from that mineral, mineral extraction use. So when we got the application in twenty thirteen, the township attorney looked at the ordinance that was or provisions in the zoning arts at that time and determined that they did not determine whether or not very serious consequences would result. So the the opinion was, what you have in the zoning ordinance doesn't comply with Public Act one thirteen, which means it doesn't comply with the zoning enabling act. So a committee of the planning commission, and I don't think anyone that was on the committee is still on the planning commission or on the board, worked on, with the township attorney on drafting what's now Article twelve in the zoning ordinance. And it's based on, township's called Metamora, they're near LaPire. It's based on their ordinance and the reason that was the route that was chosen is that ordinance had been tested, I think, all the way up to the Michigan Court of Appeals. And it was upheld as complying with the zoning enabling act and basically determining whether very serious consequences would result from a mineral extraction operation.
Is that case still ongoing?
I don't think so, it was some time ago, but I I don't know for sure. But that was the reason, there were two, it was Norwood Township and Metamora. And Metamora was chosen because their ordinance had been tested and that was as of a couple of years ago, I didn't think the lawsuit was still ongoing, but I don't know that.
My, my understanding was that it was still, that one phase had gone through and it had been gone. That it was still ongoing litigation.
Yeah, that I, I think that could be the case, I'm not, I wasn't aware of that. So the ordinance was created, the section or the article in the zoning ordinance and the soil erosion or soil removal ordinance drafted by the committee, went through the planning commission, was recommended for approval, ultimately went through the township board, was adopted. Now we're, you know, weighing whether or not an amendment to that is in order. So the ordinances as they currently exist without the amendments, you know, this little step sheet process sort of lays out, you know, the steps that someone would have to go through to get approval. Prior to this being on the books, the zoning ordinance said what areas of the township soil extraction was allowed in. And as a planner, I didn't like that. This ordinance, the township is wide open, could be anywhere, but it puts the onus on the developer to prove that the area they're selecting is feasible for mineral extraction. So the old ordinance, it was allowed in residential areas which did mesh with the township master plan and you know, not every area is going to be good for mineral extraction. You know, if it's close to a residential neighborhood or a school, it's much better to just say it's township wide and leave it up to the developer to establish that the location they're selecting will match the criteria in the ordinance. So this ordinance, basically, it will create a planning and development or a PUD overlay over that area that's been selected by the developer for soil extraction. It'll rezone that area for a specified time to allow for the mineral extraction. And then at the expiration of that term, it'll revert back to however it was zoned before. And the application we had, I think it was a hundred years or maybe it was a thousand years, it was a really long time. But, yeah, so these are going to be long term, this isn't like a five year or a ten year deal. I mean, the property is going to be rezoned that way until all the, the resources are extracted and that use is no longer viable on that property. So step one on this little chart is the developer, the property owner, whomever, submits an application to the township requesting permission to apply for that rezoning to a PUD transactionary overlay. And the process is the developer, the owner has to prove, you know, they have rights to the property, including the mineral rights. That location, those minerals exist and there's a sufficient quantity to make it a viable extraction business at that site. The process is they come to the planning commission, there's a public hearing, planning commission makes a recommendation to the township board, township board ultimately decides yes or no. You've proven that that's a good location, now you can apply for the rezoning. Step two would be that rezoning and the standards in this is still in Article eleven of the zoning ordinance, the standards in that, those sections are designed to determine whether those various serious consequences will result. So the process again is the applicant submits an application, they have to submit a pretty detailed plan, they come up with a use agreement for that extraction use. they submit everything to the planning commission, planning commission holds a public hearing, planning commission determines that all the criteria is met, planning commission makes a recommendation to the township board, township board approves or denies that rezoning. If that gets approved, the terms will be in the agreement that was created by the developer, the property owner, approved by the planning commission and the board. And then that use plan, and that use plan has to have, you know, a lot of detail. You know, what steps are going to be taken to make sure this doesn't become a nuisance for the neighbors? Going to protect groundwater, going to protect the roads? What's the reclamation plan for the property after this is done? You know, what's going to be done, it's going to be filled in, it's going to be graded, reseeded? You know, all those details will be put into that plan so that a hundred and eighty years from now, who's ever here can look at that and say, okay, you're at the, you're at the expiration of your approval. According to your plan, this is what you need to do to put that property back to productive use. So if the rezoning is approved by the township board, then you shift gears to that soil extraction or that police power ordinance, and there's a separate permit that has to be, or soil removal, has to be applied for. That ordinance has a review, and it wasn't designed, and I know the board is looking at this, it wasn't designed to be like punitive, or it was just designed to be a simple, yep, they're doing what they said they were going to do, what they got approval for, we'll renew it for another two years. But I think the board's looking at that in maybe, maybe a longer-term review period. But it wasn't intended to, you know, try to undo what's already happened. It was just more or less just to make sure everything's keeping on track with what was approved. So the, I, the way this ordinance is written, there is a process, there is a method to get approval. And soil gravel mineral resource extraction is very important, it's needed, we couldn't have roads, we couldn't have a lot of things if that wasn't happening somewhere. But the ordinance is designed to make sure that those very serious consequences don't result from the use here in the township. So that is kind of the process in a nutshell, and it was a lot of work, a lot involved by that committee and the township attorney in sort of putting this all together. So, do you have any questions for me?
I wish I would have had this in 2023.
And I didn't print up copies of the ordinances because they're pretty long, but they are on the township website.
Yeah.
The zoning ordinance is, and then that soil removal ordinance is, too.
Yeah, thank you for summarizing this so succinctly, it's very helpful. And I, I won, and I, I wonder if it's going to come back to us, and I ask if it does come back to us that they be really specific about what they, how, what they want it to be.
Yeah.
Because I, yeah.
The, the other thing, and I'm going back in time to the, I mean, you know, Anita was on the planning commission, Andy, I think you were too. But one of the things that, you know, I think the planning commission, and I'll speak for you two, but the other three who are here, the old ordinance left the responsibility completely with the planning commission.
Yes.
That was the end-all-be-all approval for this. This ordinance, the planning commission, because we're the land use board, we review and we make a recommendation, but the approval or denial comes from the township board, you know, comes from the elected officials. Because it's a needed use, and if it's done right, it's very beneficial. But, you know, it's an intense commercial use, it's an industrial use, and if it's done wrong, it can have a really adverse impact on a lot of things in the township. So the thought was that those decisions should be made by the township board and not by the planning commission in this ordinance, that was part of what was included in this one as well.
And puts the onus back onto the developer-owner of the land to prove you've got the goods, put them front, front of it. And so, a question just for the benefit of all, who would be the professionals, professional, examples of professional consultants when they go through the process?
You, you know, township attorney, township planners, maybe a traffic engineer, depending on what the haul routes are going to be, maybe a hydrologist, you know, determine what impact, if any, on the water table, maybe a geologist, too, to determine what impact, if any, on the soil and, you know, the topography. So I think it depends on the application, but those would be the primary professionals that would be consulted.
I guess I was looking at, because this came up for me, because I got hammered with my hang last year. And just when I was looking at the revise and, and this, and because I have a pasture area that would work first, how to affect my appeals, but I could do with pasture area and do this. And some of the things that popped out at me is, like, it's going to be six inches above median elevation. Well, some of, you know, a lot of my property is two-foot below road level. You know, stockpiling. Four inches of topsoil will go back over everything, well, generally, when you take topsoil off, you not put the topsoil back on, you're planting pines, red-white pines, that they don't need it. For example, the Beth's Road, that got stripped, planted pines. And I kind of reached out, reached out to, buddy you know, Elmer's, Monty's. Elmer said it was too restrictive. Elmer said it wasn't worth them fighting. And to me, when you've got Elmer's money, that's got a bigger bankroll than the township does. When it's not worth it for Elmer's to fight, it's too restrictive, and I talked to a couple of local, just family excavating, smaller in Central Lake, and one locally, they had the same context. It was too restrictive. That it just wasn't worth the loop, all loops chomped through with, between neighbor noise and some of the stuff, and, and again, it was some of the stuff that I, you know, I'm not in the industry, so I don't know. But I guess what really jumped out to me, when, when you've got EPOCs like Elmer's does, and you say it's too restrictive, because Elmer can spend fifty thousand dollars in court and is not going to deny. The township doesn't have fifty thousand dollars spent in court. And I guess that's what worried me is if, and again, I also talked, the same thing with the road issues we have and coming in. I talked to three different guys that work for different companies, and they're like, yeah, we don't care about banks because they're, it's so anti-mining that it's kind of, yeah, you roads, yeah, we don't, we're not bidding roads and, you know, you don't have enough roads to make it worth it a while, you're not doing great big projects. But to do these small things, it's kind of, it's gotten out to, that we don't, that it is an anti-mining area. And just a couple of ones I saw that is, you know, backfilling two acres at a time. You know, that's not, I don't know about mining, but as a farmer, that wouldn't be feasible for me, that I gotta bring two sets of equipment. You know, and it was a couple of small things like that, well, you know, just coming from what I do, I couldn't do that, I couldn't do that efficiently, where I gotta do two acres and then backfill two acres.
Was it two acres? I thought it was like, like ten.
Um, the operator shall replace the stored topsoil over the stripped areas in two acre acreman, says he or she progresses.
Okay. I was, I was under the impression that it was, the intent on that was as, as the gravel operation moves and goes on, that you don't wait till there's forty acres that, you know.
But this is the same section where it said you got to stockpile topsoil, where you got to put at least four inches of topsoil back, well, you know, if I, if you're, you're stockpiling, you got two acres, so I can't, you know, that's four inches of topsoil, whoever does it can't sell. And again, generally, in my experience, they're not going to restore it to how it looked before. You plant pines.
Sure, something like that.
They don't need it, you throwing pines in there. And, and moving on to harvest pines and start all over again. But, so that, I didn't see it from not having any knowledge of mining, but looking at it from how I would do a field or something, it didn't make sense to me, what I had to do, because I gotta do this, but then I gotta have another crew backfilling, well, now I gotta, I'm doing two things at the same time, and I gotta, I just saw some loopholes there, and I'm assuming that's what the, you know, Elmer and Monty were talking, it's just not worth, worth the headache when they can go somewhere else and not jump through the hoops, but.
Well, it's definitely not intended to apply to farming or small-scale operations. But the operation, the application we had, and I don't remember the amount, but the amount of revenue that was going to be generated from that project was like hundreds of millions of dollars, so.
And that's on, that was on a hundred and eighty?
Yeah. So I mean, I, I can appreciate that companies would say, oh, there's a lot of hoops to jump through. But it does provide a process to get approval. And if they get approval, I mean, I think the, the investment to get approval is going to pale in comparison to what they're going to make. I mean, that was
Well, I guess it's
what was clarifying, you know, with that first application.
But I think that, what I saw, that if that's the numbers you're talking about on that, that looks like it was just numbers put together by Rick. That was just Rick's opinion, is what, what I was looking at.
No, I think we had, we had, from the application that was submitted, we had an estimated revenue that was very significant. No, it wasn't from many
Well, I guess, well, yeah, over a hundred and eighty, a hundred and eighty acres.
Yeah, if you're, you're excavating a hundred and eighty acres over a hundred and eighty years, or whatever it was, you're going to be making lots of money. I mean, and not that money's the end-all-be-all, but the, the intent of this is to protect the residents of the township, too.
And I understand that, but also you have to, it's got to be equal protection for the property owner.
Yeah.
And again, I guess if I'm looking at four point nine billion dollars over the life of the project, and I own Elmer's, I'm going to come in here, and you can't, I guess I'm going on the assumption is, they're assuming it's not going to be over four nine billion, four point nine billion dollars, or they'd be here doing it.
Yeah.
That's just good business. So, but again, and I'm just going by what I talked to, talked to and looked at, the little things that, you know, I've got a hundred and twenty acres, so that would be kind of fallen out there.
Yeah.
A thing, but, that's, again, just coming into it, and this was one of the things I looked at, and that got brought up to me by several people, too. And so I had reached out before this, and that was the general consensus by the companies that it was too restrictive, and it wasn't, it wasn't worth it.
Yeah, I, I guess it's, it's no secret that this hasn't just been adopted by the board yet because there are definite concerns about that, exactly what Chad was saying. So that's why the discussion is ongoing.
You amend, you mean it hasn't been adopted?
Right.
Right, because the, the, I mean, the ordinance has been adopted.
Yeah, the or, it's, this is a
We do sort of keep that in mind as a planning commission, right, the ordinance is adopted. We're not, we're not, you know, six months back, right? That's already kind of passed where we're at. So still good things, I think, for us to think about and to realize, especially if it comes back. I mean, our role is to look at it and to provide some recommendation for the township. They might ask for something specific from us, but we can also give them our recommendations. So I don't think it's that we have to just be like, well, we can't do anything. We definitely can still look at it and provide a recommendation, that's all. If this is what we need.
And it's impossible to write a perfect ordinance, too. So there's, there's going to be need to amend this and change it, and, you know, so, you know, that's going to be a process that, you know, the board and the planning commission want to go through.
Yeah. So what they have right now is just what they asked of us, as far as addressing this tomorrow, like if somebody wants to, like you said, excavate the basement, right? So we just accounted for that, because that's what the township board had asked us to do. That's what's with them right now, truly, that's the, that's where it's at. If they want us to relook at the entire ordinance that hasn't been asked of us yet, and I don't think, you know, or as a board, or even a community, or a community member hasn't asked that of us yet. There's a process for them to do that as well, which hasn't been done, so. Just things for us to keep in mind.
Yeah.
But thank you for the, the background, it can get more helpful.
Yeah, it was, uh
And Travis, did you get the packet?
I didn't, no.
Can you email that, that's at the end of the paper.
Okay.
You know, I have a copy, do you want to prepare?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So I don't think this is going away, I'm sure you guys are going to be talking about this and you looking at it, so.
Yeah.
Good to have the background. Do you guys have any other questions regarding this, or even more discussion that you'd like to have before we? Okay. All right, so new business, we have the master plan, again, land use districts and maps.
You want to?
Yep, I think this is very much linked to what we talked about before with the survey, the the goals and objectives, we talked about what's related to kind of the common principles of the master plan. Kind of just gives a snapshot and encapsulates what the township wants to see over the next five, ten years, fifteen years, thinking long-term in terms of land use, how it wants to grow and change, you know, whether it wants more housing in present, you know, if it wants to preserve agricultural lands, what's the balance between those two? So we included all the goals and objectives from the current adopted master plan. This is on page twenty-six, starting on page twenty-six of the packet. You see them written all out there. I think we went over some good ideas earlier of how those could be adopted, so if it all sounds good to you all, we'll take those back this month and then come back next time with some updates to those goals and objectives for housing. And I think just tweaks to what you have in the adopted plan now would be kind of the right approach.
Okay.
So you have some tweaks to promote housing, address the breezeway task force and sort of action group between different jurisdictions here. And then maybe some things about to play up the non-motorized transportation, or non-motorized trails as well. And then moving down, we have the future land use map. This is on page thirty-three of the packet. This is sort of a map showing how the township wants to grow and change over the coming years. It's very closely tied to the goals and objectives, so I think making the goal, the future land use map kind of connect to the goals and objectives very closely would be sort of the goal here. So you'll see there's a map of the entire township. And again, this is from the existing adopted plan. This is on page thirty-three of the packet overall. And then there's a table showing small descriptions of each of the future land use categories on the previous page. So for residential, it'll say, you know, or I'm sorry, maybe a good example, that kind of teal color, most of the township is designated as forest agricultural. And so in the table there, it says the, you know, forest agricultural district on the future land use map is, the appropriate uses there are forest farms, open spaces, limited, low-density residential, things like single-family houses. So that really acts as a guide to sort of put those goals, like, you know, the community wants to preserve its agricultural land, it puts it on the map and said, so if you ever get a request from a property owner that wants to rezonate commercial there, you know, you can say, no, that's not consistent with the goals of the community overall, or yes, it is. So, yeah, really a central component of the plan. I think if it all sounds good to you all, I propose that we update this. This is from the existing adopted plan. Just update it lightly and bring it back to you all next time. I'd encourage you all to think if there's any updates you'd like to see here. I encourage you all to think if there's any updates you'd like to see here, but again, like you discussed earlier, maybe some like updates to the forest agricultural district and the residential district to sort of play up a little bit more of the housing diversity and, you know, housing variety and some of those goals to promote a little bit more variety that would be some of the main updates.
Yeah, that sounds good.
I noticed too that, and again, this is from the current plan, so that industrial category, you know, it says the uses are sand and gravel extraction operations. So on the future land use map, the only area they have designated for that would be directly adjacent to the village. So the, yeah. So the, the previous zoning ordinance wasn't consistent with that and new one is a new that, you know, we've opened it up to the whole township. But that might be an area that the planning commission wants to look at too. And maybe, maybe the industrial category shouldn't just include sand and gravel type uses.
Right. Just now, fix it up.
Right.
Change. Sounds good to me. So after you kind of come back with that, sort of what else, where are we at with the master plan process?
This, so, you know, we'll, we'll come back with draft revisions to these items. Once those are approved by the planning commission, we'll have gone through all the chapters. So the, the next step will be to bring back a complete draft version of everything. The planning commission will go through that, maybe one, maybe two meetings. And then once that, the planning commission blesses a final rough draft, we send it to the township board. Township board will say, first step is to say, okay, we think this looks good enough or is okay to distribute to the surrounding municipalities, the county, the utility providers, and that'll be out for what's called the 63 day review period. It'll be available on the website, we'll notify folks that, hey, you know, what's out there, take a look, comment. At the conclusion of that, the planning commission will have a, hold a public hearing, note that that'll be, an ad will be put in the paper, we'll have a public hearing. And then based on the results of the 63 day review and the public hearing, any changes can be put by the planning commission into the plan, come up with a final draft that will be approved by the planning commission and then that will be sent to the township board. You know, and there's always room to change even up until, you know, even after the township board approves it, there's a process to amend the master plan, but everything's open for modification until the board approves it, but once it's approved by the board, that'll be the current master plan for the township. So we're, we're making pretty good progress.
Good. And we can keep aside really for the next five years.
Yes.
Yeah. And that 63 day review period, previously, that's when they actually like got this out to different restaurants and places for people to look at it, right?
Yep.
And to hold some public meeting, maybe not meetings, but.
Like an open house?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do that too, yeah, that's.
Do you think that's necessary, or you think that the changes are gonna be minimal enough that it's not?
I think that's up to the planning commission. I think the changes are gonna be relatively minor from the 2018 plan, but it's probably not a bad idea to at least maybe get the word out there and give the option, we think people wanna come and comment on it. You know, the.
Could we do like some kind of a virtual comment area, like maybe not quite a survey, but something where people have to come to the town hall to review it and comment, if they could give the board feedback?
Like you made a QR code?
Yeah.
People could scan that and.
Yeah.
Get their comments there.
That's a good idea.
And their website.
Yeah. Where people can, you know, and what used to be required is, you know, a hard copy of this was mailed to all those entities. We've modernized and now we can just send a letter that says, hey, it's available for your review, follow this link, it's available on the township website. So we can do something similar where people can look at the plan on the website and then, and maybe provide a place to get a hard copy too, and then they can comment, you know, virtually, you know, however they want to.
Do you know how many people have signed up for that? I know they have that alert thing now, the township and the village have done.
Oh, I don't know.
They're worried you can send out, make some out messages for the meeting, sign up or alerts and stuff. But I don't know how many people have actually signed up for it, would be.
I think your wife might know that.
Right.
But she didn't have the answer in our last meeting, so.
That's a good idea. To send it out, like, is it an email or a text?
It's a text blast.
Is it text.gov?
Something like that.
Well, something similar.
But that's a good idea.
But they do have to sign up and then you have to, so it's all depends on how many people actually signed up to receive it.
Yeah. You know, the zoning statute still use a newspaper and not many people read newspapers, not what it is. So there's always better ways to get it out there than that. Maybe torture.
You know, I love those newspapers.
So we're, we're approaching the final stress of at least having a draft for the planning commission to review and comment on it.
All right, sounds good. Any last minute comments, questions about the master plan? All right. All right, we do have a moment for a public comment, if anybody would like to.
I have a question. Should the soil extraction ordinance come back for further review? And if there are additional changes, will there be another public hearing?
Yes, if there's significant changes, then, if there's changes.
If any changes?
Yeah. If there's like a, you know, something spelled wrong, then no, that wouldn't go. But any other change to the actual rate, which would require another public hearing.
And is that something you think is brewing?
Well, the board is still discussing it. The board, it's still, if, yeah, if you are, Nia, so if you have a great interest, if you would go to the board meeting, you'll hear more about what's currently their sentiment on it.
Okay, and the county did review it though, is that correct? The county reviewed it, did, and, oh, did they have, did they approve it and send it to the board, is that?
The county reviewed the minor changes made that was approved by the planning commission in order for it to go to the township board. The ongoing conversation that they're having is about the minor changes that we've had and that's as far as we know and we will know until the board makes a decision.
No, that's exactly right. The, the initial ordinance was also sent to the county. They wrote a letter, you know, they commented on it and then it went to the board and then this amendment followed that same process. Yep.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Our next meeting will be July 8th and I will take the motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it. All right, so if you are adjourned, I.
Is the motion carried?
Motion.